Both, we're continuing with our agenda. Going to the approval of minutes. The Chair entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended of the October 24th, 2023 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the October 24th, 2023 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 6th, 2023 special meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the November 6th, 2023 special meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no public comments, so we'll continue with the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations: Michael Swobowski, interim co-athletic director; Hannah Ritz, teaching assistant; Amanda Wilson, teaching assistant; Jatori Tyler, teaching assistant and girls JV basketball coach; Kaviria Laza, girls basketball coach. And resignations. Approval of the November 2023 expenditure to the report; ratification of the October 2023 regular payroll; and approval of student tours request athletics.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Steckity?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Countover?
Yes.
And we'll go into, that motion passes. We'll go into information discussion, starting with Illinois School Report Card.
So, as Dr. Braun had presented at a previous meeting, the designations have been released by the Illinois State Board of Education. So, they annually give their summative designations. It's a multiple measure index of academic achievement and student success for every public school in the state of Illinois. The makeup of the summative designations and indicators and weights are as follows. For elementary and middle schools, there's an ELA growth, 20%; math growth of 20%; ELA proficiency of 7.5%; math proficiency of 7.5%; science proficiency of 5%; EL progress to proficiency of 5%; chronic absenteeism of 20%; and the climate survey completion of 5%. So they take the scores in each of these categories, and then the state is obligated to give a designation to every public school in Illinois. Exemplary is the highest category for the top 10% of schools. From the 11th percentile to the 89th percentile is commendable; then there's targeted, and then there's comprehensive. So there's four different categories. For high schools, the graduation rate, the four-, five-, and six-year cohort graduation rate is 50% of the designation; math proficiency is 7.5; ELA proficiency is 7.5; for the first time, science proficiency is 5%; EL progress to proficiency is 5%; chronic absenteeism is 10%; ninth graders on track is 8.33%; and the climate survey is 6.67%. So they give these designations every year. I am pleased to announce that Westmont High School is exemplary with a score of 97.17. Out of 665 high schools in the state, the Illinois State Board of Education's designation system, the high school ranks number two out of 665 high schools in Illinois. That's the second year in a row that we've ranked number two. Since the inception of the Illinois State Board of Education's designation system, a high school has been exemplary every year. And I would argue has the highest overall rating in the history of this system. And that's pretty impressive. And I'm really proud of all the work from the teachers, the students, the staff, administration, the entire school community that went into that work. Westmont Junior High School has a score of 63.87, commendable. Manning is also commendable with a score of 70.55. And Miller Elementary School is commendable with 66.76. For those schools to become exemplary, they need a score of currently over 80, about 81. And the staff and administration and school community is working diligently. I can't even tell you how hard the teachers and admin and students do are working to move to exemplary. I'm very proud of that, so. That is the end. This is available online. We have a presentation. And the Board too has this information. It shows the different breakdowns and the different scores of the four schools in the district.
And something else we found from looking at this, and we appreciate that presentation last meeting, because Mrs. Grayden helps even more, I learn more even with this last presentation. As I've learned over the last few years. But one thing that stood out that we discussed that I wanted to help make clear that a lot of this growing, we have a lot of work to do in, you know, in our ELA, in our math. But one thing that I think it's a good target that we have done this year is with the chronic absenteeism. Even looking at Manning, they're 70.55, but the chronic absenteeism, if we can cut that down and get that score up, you know, seven more points, that's close to that exemplary level. So that's, you know, one of the reasons. You know, the biggest reason, kids in school, they're going to learn. That's the biggest reason, you know. And then, yes, we hit, we have this target and hitting that number. It shows that we are working, and we're working in a great direction, so.
Yeah, and I know we talked about this pretty in-depth last time, but that piece of the growth, not necessarily the proficiency. Our kids are, our kids are meeting the proficiency, but it's the growth year over year that we, that we have work to do, and we're doing that work, but then very specifically that absenteeism piece, which I think is something that we're all focusing on this year. Can you speak to, I know there were a couple of schools that went from exemplary to commendable. Can you speak to the reason for that for most of them? Was it their absenteeism also?
Most of the schools, some of the schools who have traditionally been thought of as the highest performing in the state are not exemplary this year. And it's primarily because of their chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, and I mean, every, you know, these designations came out the last, officially in the last couple of weeks. So there's been lots of, you know, news reporting, and, and I don't think there's been a single report where a school has not spoken about absenteeism.
Yes.
It is, it is very important. It is not just having a, you know, having kids in classroom every day, but when kids are in class, they learn.
Yes, that's a great point. We are, I mean, we are really working in partnership with our parents. We need students in school. There are reasonable exceptions to that. But it, we cannot educate our students, and the students cannot take advantage of the education unless they're present in school. And it will, it has to be a partnership, so yes. And we're, the teachers are working so hard to provide excellence in education, but if students are not there, they can't take advantage of it.
Yeah, and the state weighs it for a reason.
Yes.
So, thank you.
And I think, you know, I tell the community members to look at that presentation and view that presentation, because a lot of questions are asked and answered, and one is explaining that what is chronic absenteeism. So, a lot of things that you can gain from that presentation, so. It's, I'm sorry, it's, it's hard to, we're not, we're conducting a meeting. It's not an open meeting, so I apologize for that, but just.
I'll be here after the meeting.
Definitely. Other questions or statements about the Illinois School Report Card? All right. We're going to move along to the tentative 2023 tax levy.
So tonight, I'm going to go through the tentative levy for the 2023 school year. So after tonight, I'm going to be publicizing the levy hearing on December 7th. By law, the hearing must be publicized more than seven days, but less than 14 from the public hearing. So that will be December 7th. And December 19th is the board meeting. December 26th would be the last day for the district to file to the county. So before I go through the tentative levy, I want to try to explain some definitions. So the levy is the amount that the district requests and asks from the county. The extension is what the district actually receives and is billed from the county. And then the collection is what the bottom line number the district collects. So usually, the district collects around 98% to 99% of the tax extension. EAV is the equalized assessed valuation of the real estate within the taxing body. The new property growth is the new improvements or any additions from real estates within the taxing body. And CPI is the Consumer Price Index. So all six definitions really play a role in the tax levy calculations and what is actually being requested and collected and billed through the levy process. So this graph shows a comparison between CPI, the Consumer Price Index, the tax levy, what the district ask and request, and then tax extension of what the district actually receives. So looking at levy year 2022 last year, in the blue is the CPI, 7%. In the red is what the district requested, 9%. And then in the green is what the district actually received, 6%. So as you can see historically, what the district receives in the CPI is nearly close. For the 2023 levy year, CPI would be 6.5%. So again, the district always asks more than CPI and what they actually receive.
And, or you may get into this. Can you just kind of go and explain why we do that?
Yeah, so I'll explain more later, but the reason why the district would ask more is because if they do not, and we ask less than what we actually receive or what we've been allocated to receive, we lose the difference forever, and it's compounded. Here is EAV historical data in the district, dating back to levy year 2018 in blue. And then in yellow or orange is what the projected EAV is going to be for 2023 levy year. And again, best practice and past practice is to overestimate, because if you don't, again, you lose those dollars forever. Here is new property growth history in the district, dating back to levy year 2018. In orange is the projection for the 2023 levy year. So this looks and evaluates all the funds in the tax levy bracket dating back to 2021. So in orange, you look at 2021 requested and 2021 received, so extension. In purple is in 2022 levy and 2022 extension. And then in yellow is the 2023 levy that is going to be approved next board meeting. So as you can see, each 21, 22, the levy has always been higher than what we received. So for the 2023 levy year, we would be levying roughly $30.7 million, which represents 11.9% increase from prior year. And again, why does the district ask and project more? Is because if we do not, and the levy comes in a lot, extension comes in higher than what we ask, the difference is lost forever. And those numbers don't come public until March, April, and May. So that's why districts project. And as you, as you can see the history, the district has always projected more than what we received. This does not mean property taxes will increase by 11.9%. It is just projecting so we don't lose those funds forever. Any questions?
Okay, so we can go back up to the bar graphs. This is more of just a comment. On the EAV history and the new property history, it would be helpful, and I do not want you doing a ton of work in this sense, but just putting from the previous years what we requested kind of as a shadow behind what we actually received. So it doesn't, because this looks like we jumped, but we're not jumping. We're probably trending very similarly. So just from like a understanding that, really, again, drilling into that piece of what we are asking for in the levy is very different from what we will ever expect to receive in the levy. And then from the EAV new property, CPI, you mentioned CPI is less than 5% in the previous calendar year. So regardless, right, if we've got 7% for five years running, we're never going to be able to ask, or it'll never go up more than five, right?
Yeah, so by law, districts in PTEL, surrounding districts, so property tax limitation law, districts are obligated to receive 5% the max or CPI if it's lower than 5%. So the most we can get is always 5% plus new property. So by asking, like, for example, last year, 9%. By law, we wouldn't be getting 9%. Asking 11.9% this year, by law, we wouldn't be getting 11.9%.
Yeah, and property taxes are essentially, our funding is essentially two years in arrears. So we're talking about, you know, the inflation that was hitting our community two years ago is now what we're able to levy for. So then my last kind of, and this is a clarifier, and I ask you this one every single time. So if we had asked for 4% last year, and we received 4%, we would be missing out on 2% that we received, yeah? And we'd never be able to get it. The state wouldn't be like, oh, we'll just give you the extra because you deserve this much. We have to ask for way more.
That 2% would equivalent to be $300,000. So that $300,000 would be compounded each year because the district wouldn't ask that, and the county wouldn't be giving that to the district.
Yeah.
So that $300,000 compounded, so year one, $300,000; year two, $600,000.
Yeah, and on years where we took massive inflation spikes already. Yeah, cool. Thank you.
I did have another question, going to the new property. And I think Leah kind of spoke to it, maybe helpful, but how do we get to that projected absentee? Is that something we usually do, and that's just part of it, or?
So the district always asks for a significant amount of EAV and new property growth. And by the December 19th board meeting, I'll have next to these what we ask in the EAV and what we ask for new property.
That's pretty standard.
It's pretty standard practice, yeah. And $10 million just captures, again, the over-projection of the levy. So it's, you know, historically, as you could see, it's around that $3 billion to $3.5 million of new property. So it's, it's not going to come near $10 million, but again, it's overestimating to capture all dollars.
But that projection of the 185, is that, that's what I mean? That standard, is it, why isn't it 150 increase? Like, why is that projection?
Why is it 185? Well, that's just the $10 million projected compared to the 3.5. So, you know, yeah, I mean, I can project $8 million, and that 185% difference would be decreased. But, you know, just past practice, and past practice is, again, overestimate everything.
Is that spike in '21, the apartment building?
Correct.
Okay.
But that is in TIF district.
Yeah, so it's not affecting it the same way?
No.
Yeah.
No. And, and when the TIF runs out, and it is on the tax bills, we'll see closer to that $10 million of new property growth. But as, like I said, in the years past, we're seeing that 3 to 3.5.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, still there? We'll move to the presentation of monthly financial statements, October 2023.
So in the month of October, the district received roughly $1.2 million. And from July through October, the fiscal year so far, the district has received 44.74% of the budgeted revenue. That is slightly better than projected at 42.66%. On the expenditure side, the district spent $2.8 million in the month of October. And from year-to-date, July through October, the district has spent 25.47% of the annual budget. That is better than projected at 30%. So we are collecting a little bit more than projected and spending less than projected. Any questions?
No questions? We'll move to the IASB resolutions. So Carlos is usually, I'm sorry, he's our delegate this year, and he was unable to make it, but he did send forward, and actually, we receive, all received proposals from the ISB delegate group of resolutions. And, as a system.
Very small amount of resolutions this year.
Yeah, there was only like six of them.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And the year I was not there, man. It's like 20, there's been like 25 before.
It was a book.
Yeah.
The year before.
Carlos has been a part of those meetings. And so in his discussion or his recommendations, he's good with going along with what the ISB is recommending. So they have some do adopt recommendations. I'll just start with that section to see if any board members have any issues. Basically, if we have any issues as our district board, if we want to go along a certain way for his vote, and he'll vote with however the board is, is asking. So they had school resource officer funding and bus driver regulations and asking. It's a little weird how they said do adopt, but some of those statements are like, you know, don't do something a certain way. So adopt this resolution is a little tricky in a reading with these. But I'm taking the do adopt recommendations as a group if anyone had any questions or statements they had about either one of those.
Also, I think just to kind of explain, right, these are resolutions that the IASB is our, is our, you know, the Illinois Association of School Boards, and these are the things that the IASB is working towards on our behaves, or not working towards, on our, on our school boards behalf. So this is kind of our piece of the legislative process, if you will.
Right, school districts bring forth legislation to get all of our approval to go to the government.
Yeah, and this is what the IASB will either work towards or not work towards. Do we want to, because there's not very many of them, do we want to say what they are and then, or?
We can.
And just kind of what the IASB's recommendation is? I mean, I think, I, personally, I support the IASB's recommendations on all of them, and I think that they're, I feel like somebody new was creating this report because the reasons why were very succinct and very clear. And very easy to understand why, yeah.
So the one they had, because they have a packet that they issued out, so I'll take it in that order. The industrial construction, which I kind of went over twice because I was reading through and trying to understand why the board's asking us not to adopt it. So that is basically a, is it a resolution or a proposal to? There are some areas in Illinois that want to allow industrial construction in their area. Some people oppose it because of, they question safety and environmental impacts on the areas. But the other side of that is that, the argument is that most of these areas, we don't have to deal with this in most of our areas in Illinois because we're in bigger cities or neighborhoods. So the schools that do want this, this is part of their income and their, kind of their financial status. And so they want to be allowed to make their decision and be a local.
Yeah, should be under local control.
Local control. So ISB asks us not to adopt that.
Yes, and if it's a health and safety, the EPA should be.
And they will take precautions accordingly. Anyone want to, the next one was the board employee relations. Anybody want to just go over it, or?
The school resource officer.
The school resource officer funding. Say a quick blurb. I can do it.
So sorry, I want to make sure that I have it.
I'm kind of going.
Yeah, so the school resource officer funding, one is the next one. Request that Illinois Legislature consider legislation providing educational funding to all school districts to offset the cost of a school resource officer. The resolutions, the resolutions committee recommends that we do adopt this. The reasoning being that the presence of an SRL or school resource officer helps protect the safety of the children, and there needs to be more funding to help offset this cost. Even with grant money to cover it, school districts are left to pick up the remaining, and they could use the additional funding, so I think, yeah.
Important for safety, and it's clear cut, so. I don't think there's anything confusing about that.
Yep.
Bus driver regulations. Again, something a little tricky, but I don't know. I kind of went like over this again, reading to say, what are they asking us to adopt? But it's trying to balance the shortage of bus drivers that we have, especially in rural areas, and what I found impressive of how many miles they are driving each day. And so balancing training for the bus drivers, and I guess the stipulations that they have too higher, and so they wanted to, in a way, decrease those. So it's hard for me to say.
The requirements, yeah, taking away a little bit of the.
So, and, and we need to increase the amount of, and counter affect that bus driver shortage because we, there's too much of a need. So they're asking us to adopt this where we're taking some of that, those requirements away. Any questions or issues? Looks like we're taking turns. Anyone?
Yeah, okay, I'm on next. Employment history review. So this one is requesting that the Illinois Legislature consider using the Illinois Department of Child and Family Services Child Abuse Neglect Tracking System as a means to fulfill or help fulfill the employee history review that was new this year due to FATE'S law, which requires that school districts, whenever they hire somebody, go back to all the school districts or the public districts that someone has worked for, which is a challenge and has been hard for school districts for sure to figure this out. I also was like, yes, let's do the thing. A thing exists. But then, understanding the resolution, the committee does not recommend that we adopt this one. And the reasoning here does make sense that, when I kind of got through it all, I was like, yeah, the committee understood and agrees that finding a way to help just. like, yeah, the committee understood and agrees that finding a way to help districts implement FATES law is important, but they felt this was not the right system to use to fix the issue. So let's find the right system.
Right, because there's pretty much too much time on your district office.
Yeah.
And it wasn't actually helping the process as much. And we have something we do use and can't use, so.
Yeah, yeah, so let's figure it out. Let's alleviate some of the pressure that it's added to employing, but this is maybe not the right way to do it.
And then the last one was alternative to safe school funding. Just trying to get, let's read it kind of, they discuss the current position statement and it already states I S B will advocate for evidence-based funding to support funding for alternative schools. Members also discuss a possible review of School Board One Hundred, which encourage limiting students' suspensions and expulsions and establish a parent teacher advisory committee that would develop with the school board and policy guidelines and people discipline. So basically, again, you know, what do we use? What do we have? And so we have something in place, basically saying do not, they don't want to adopt this at this time. And so what we take for this, you know, what we're letting Carlos know is if we're going to agree with what's been proposed and unless anyone has any big objections now, that's what we'll allow Carlos to do at the conference this weekend.
Right, yeah, no objections.
No, I'm good with the recommendations.
Yep.
All right, well, let Carlos know. There's also other things that they're basically not presenting or doing right now, so we don't have to get into that. If there are no other, no other comments, we'll go into our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar.
I'd like to thank, first of all, Lindsay Peters, who headed up this committee and put a lot of time into it. Shannon Cosart was also a part of this work. Heidi Ardini, our union president, Laura Lopez, who am I forgetting? Shannon?
Peggy Chapinski, good parents. Good parents on the committee.
That's great. Peggy Chapinski was part of the calendar committee.
With Sam Sinovich.
And Sam Sinovich, our Miller principal. So you have two options here, A and E. And yes, that E represents the evolution of five different calendars that the committee went through. As I say, they were very thorough and they're two pretty different options. Each meticulously designed to cater to different facets of the district's needs. Calendar A, which I would characterize as a more of a standard, pretty similar to our current year calendar, prioritizes an early start, featuring three consecutive teacher institute days at the beginning of the school year. These days allow for specialized staff training. And this also starts, aims to balance the first semester conclude before winter break, particularly impacting grades six through twelve. In contrast, calendar E proposes an August SIP day for staff training, mirroring the emphasis on professional development and collaboration about student needs. It also strategically plans breaks throughout the year to accommodate family vacations and state mandated holidays like the November fifth election day, aiming to minimize disruptions to instructional time. So when we went through the state designations, it became very clear, students being in attendance is really important and parents pulling students out of school for family vacations is detrimental to that. There are understood, you know, family is a priority. But when we look at calendar E, there are almost every month, long weekends that we've added to the calendar to maximize opportunities for families to maybe go away if they so selected to do so. But the idea is we've built these in E if the board chooses this option, so people can get family time, they can go away throughout the year. But also then it's a priority that the days we have remaining, that students be taking advantage of the education we're providing. The first, as an example, in calendar E, the first set of conference states before the end of the first quarter, capitalizing on the fact that students and parents in grades K through twelve now have access to online grading. Moreover, it acknowledges the shift to standards-based grading at elementary levels, recognizing the standards are not to be expected to be proficient till the end of the school year. This shift renders quarter timelines more fluid, acknowledging that learning is continuous throughout the academic year. Both calendars take into account the second semester assessment season across various grades, including assessments like access testing, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, I A R, science assessments, P S A T S A T, eye ready spring tests, advanced placement tests, and final exams, carefully weaving these into the academic schedule. These calendars represent a comprehensive effort to balance staff development, student needs, academic requirements, and newer opportunities for and more opportunities for families to vacation without missing crucial learning time. Each presents a unique approach to meet the district's diverse set of requirements or priorities. So, very briefly, calendar A is more of a traditional calendar. It mirrors in many ways what we have this year. If you look at, so that's an option, obviously, and a good option, I think. Calendar E, the addition, so of course, we start at the same time. Then we have September. In October, there is, if families choose to do so, the parent teacher conferences and Indigenous Peoples' Day on October fourteenth will provide the opportunity for a four-day weekend in October. Then there's another, because of the mandated election day and an institute day, there's another octo opportunity in November for another forty weekend, plus the Thanksgiving holiday, which is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So in the first four months of the school year, there are three significant times for breaks for families. And then, of course, in December, there's the winter break. In January, there's a three-day weekend option. But then again, in February, we've bundled President's Day with an Institute Day. So once again, families could, if they selected to, have from Thursday afternoon until Monday evening for another mini break. In February, in March, there's elongated spring break because the parent teacher conferences are next to the spring break, which gives a real extended period of time for people take advantage of. And then, once again, in April, there is that break from the eighteenth through the twenty-first. And then we're in the final month and we end the school year early. I guess either option, these are the options that the board has presented with, we've kind of outlined the differences. One thing I do want to stress, though, is that we've tried to be cognizant of the fact that we need students in school and we're trying to accommodate some parents' needs, especially with calendar E for vacations, but it's really imperative that people are in school, that we need our students in school, to remain the best school district possible. So those are the two calendar options.
We've talked all night long. We need to get these three to talk.
No, I like the the adjustments made after our last discussion and it's nice, those little breaks. You hope that the parents would take advantage of it. That's my theory on that. I do like calendar E.
There wasn't, the committee worked really hard to incorporate some of the ideas that the board had presented and I think representing the community's needs too.
Yeah, I agree. I like calendar E. I like the built-in breaks, you know, so hopefully, parents could take advantage of that and then when school is in session, they are, the students are in session, so I'm in favor of E.
I just have a question towards that. I'll be that person. With calendar E, the breaks, like how is it, you know, how do you view this? Is it too disruptive, almost too teaching? Like some of the months, I don't know, like you're, I know, with gaining the flow with learning, that's what I, that's what I'm hesitant about with calendar E. Like, yes, I appreciate that and I understand why, because that is an ask for many of our our parents and things like that. But I think on the opposite side, there are people that don't go on breaks many often and they're, they have to deal with childcare and, you know.
It's the same amount of childcare days.
But with these extended, are they, are they the same?
It's the same amount of childcare days, calendar to calendar, because of the days off and that, it's just the placement.
Yeah, technically, we're in this, either calendar has the same number of days in attendance. It is attend, it's the way we're bundling them, as Anne said.
I think that's important to say, thank you, Anne, because.
Yeah, it's the same amount of calendar days. It always is. It's just where they're being bundled and when they're being pushed.
And so, yeah, so that's what I would ask a teacher, like, or the group. And they, and so I can make a point like, no, these are great, you need these and students deserve a break to say, to take a step back and.
Jack, what do you think? Do you think it's disruptive, all the breaks?
Well.
He's not on the committee.
Yeah. Put you on the hot seat.
When you were a teacher, but that is also a different time, when you were a teacher.
I'll tell you how this will work. If the board chooses calendar E, we're going to make a big push out to say, team, community, everybody, from parents, students, and our staff, we've built so many breaks and we need to prioritize. You know, one of the reasons why the high school is one of the only schools that's been exemplary every year is because of our attendance. Lot of top high schools in the state are no longer exemplary because of chronic absenteeism and not high attendance. So what I see happening here, to get to the point, yes, some of these breaks could protect, but what we could get in return is if we increase attendance and we really say to everybody, not only is there the traditional summer break and winter break and spring break and Thanksgiving break, but four other long breaks, if you will, we need to be in school all the time, that we're not on these multiple breaks. And that will be good for our students, good for their education, good for our community. And that will result in the long run in an optimal learning environment. So I get Adina's point, it's a valid one, but part of choosing calendar E is that we have to commit as a community to being in school when we say we're going to be in school. And there are still optimal opportunities to take breaks, if that makes sense. So do I, to be honest, is there a little bit? The breaks could lead, but you know, there is the reverse, that it could lead to some good mental health opportunities, could lead to some people refreshing and coming back even stronger on the days that we are present. I guess that's my real point, Kevin. If we go with calendar E, then we need to make a commitment as a team to really be here during the days we say we're going to be here. And it's a beautiful balance of getting some breaks, but really maximizing the time we have.
And I think I can almost argue myself with that statement disruptive, because and like in some ways, it may be disruptive to have, like, I think, thank you for your point again, Anne, so these are the same amount of days.
Yes.
They're the same amount of breaks, but it may be more disruptive to have all these scattered days off. Now we're organizing the times off and they're in chunks, they're not this day off, in all way, I'm back in school for three days and I have one day off and now it's a regular weekend, but then I'm off, you know, on a Monday or Tuesday, but with it being more organized in a way, may organize teaching and.
I think this is going to be a great test. I mean, seriously, I think this will be a great test rather than the one, two random days. Oh, in the middle of this day, oh wait, that's another four, four-day school week, oh wait, this is a three-day school week. I just think it'll be a great test to go forward.
Can I, can I ask, over the last however many years, have you seen, and I know this is very unscientific, what I'm asking you to do. Have you seen an uptick in kind of family-created four-day weekends? Or do you think, like, over the last, I don't know, five years or so, have you seen more kids out for a three-day weekend, a four-day weekend?
Personally, I've seen more people take out in the fall because there's certain holidays to be celebrated in certain special places.
But what are we, do we see that in the school? Have we seen, and I know, I know, unscientific, but have you seen an increase in kind of families creating their own long weekends?
Right.
In previous years?
It's a slight uptick, perhaps.
And then, I think with the, another question, with the chart, I think that was in, are these consistent with like what other schools are doing or?
That's a great question, too. So here's some comparisons. Lyle School District is beginning on the fifteenth and ending on the twenty-third. So very similar to ours. Hinsdale is starting on the twelfth and ending on the twenty-third, identical to ours. Downers is starting on the nineteenth and ending on the twenty-third. Naperville is starting on the fifteenth and ending on the twenty-seventh, so a couple days on each week. Glenbard is starting on the fifteenth and ending on the twenty-third. And District Eighty-eight is starting on the fourteenth and ending on May twenty-ninth. So.
Starts days are pretty.
I mean, within a day or two, we're very similar to the majority of districts.
And Downers Fifty-Eight starts later than us, but they have the ongoing construction also and different issues with air conditioning. Many more issues with air conditioning than we.
You mean no air conditioning? No air conditioning here alone. It's a nice brick building.
So I think this is a good, we're very, to answer the latest question from Adina, which is a legitimate one, of course, we're very consistent with other districts, given a day or two on either way.
Well, and especially considering that we're a unit district. You typically see the high school districts start earlier for the exact same reason that we start earlier, is the testing factor, the kids being done before the holidays with for semester, like all those pieces. I mean, I, you know, I think, I think I like calendar E because I like, give them always going to take the chance on something new out there and the voting holiday is kind of what spurred this.
Right.
Because it was in that original kind of calendar B was like, ooh, let's, could we make, could we make that November voting, you know, that that November election day into like a little mini break? And well, let's continue having that conversation. So I think it gives us this opportunity to try something. I I do say that the things that concern me about, or not concern me, but I don't know, whatever, let's measure it however we can, pick some weekends in here, and let's see if it makes a difference in attendance. Do we still have kids out? However, and I know that is not going to be easy to measure, but but pick some weekends where you typically have kids out, maybe it'll be easier, harder, but but let's.
Just keep an eye out for it.
And I think this is something that, as a board, we ask for a lot of data. We don't get a lot of data with the school calendar and the school calendar is specifically tied to attendance data. So when we talk about SMART goals, when we talk about, you know, how we're going to get there, this is one of the ways, and I think the thing that that I miss on the calendar is some of that data piece around like students being out unexcused, medical excused, like, you know, because that helps us understand why students are out a little bit. And I think this is tied directly to it. So I think that's the caveat that I have is, is that piece of, let's see if it worked. Let's have some proof if it works or doesn't work, so that we can make a decision for next year. And then the other caveat, which you call, which you called out, was pushing this out. I can count down the number of days that there is going to be a, has anybody seen the new calendar? Posting, and I know who's going to ask it also, like literally December first, right? So because people are planning their vacations for the next year, right? They're planning their days off. We've got, you know, people who work for different government, government, community members that have to plan their vacations, you know, a year out, right? Like, so we already have people starting to think that. So let's get that communication ready to go out as soon as possible and let's talk about the intention behind calendar E. The intention here is, let's give our families some traveling options, you know, the spring break, because what would it be? The first day of conferences is in person, second day of conference is entirely virtual. So like, that's spring break, right? The twenty-seventh is a half day. And then the twenty-eighth is virtual. And then you've got the whole next week. That is so many different potential travel days for a family to coordinate, that's a, that is a gift, instead of everybody traveling on a Saturday when everyone else is. So, so I think speak to the intentionality behind it, that it's about giving our families some options, you know, for bigger, longer breaks, as opposed to kind of one-off days. And get that communication out there before people are starting to ask for it. Send the calendar out before, don't let people find out because it's been posted on the website, like, push it. Those are my two caveats. Those are my two caveats.
And yes, thanks for the PLC on Halloween.
Yeah, we did that, too. It, well, calendar, both calendars. So, yes, we will push it on with intentionality. We'll create a video around it, like Anna does, a really nice one to explain in detail, and text to go with it. Uh, and the other thing is, there is a way to track. We will continue, as we're doing, monitoring chronic absenteeism, looking at overall absence rates, looking at absences around those break days. So it's not perfect, but we could take a look at a lot of data.
Yeah, I mean, there are some of the, right, like, this past weekend, it was, what, November 4th was election day, even though nobody had an election. But this past weekend, I'm sure that that's like a year that, a weekend that we start to see year over year kind of happening.
Any other comments or questions about this?
Do you need to straw poll us?
No, because there's a vote.
It's a regular vote, okay? I'm just making sure it's a regular vote, not a pick or choose.
Oh, I guess, um, yes, actually, it's a straw poll of how we will word our, um, the approval. You're right, so, um, yes, we can kind of go down the line. Uh, if you guys are okay, it's just sounding to me that what we will be voting on is approving calendar E. And so I can just take it from there, if, um, if there's any objections to wording, um, our, um, action item as, um, approving calendar E. Any objections to that?
No.
Okay. And so, we'll vote on that and turn. And I don't want to rush anybody if they have any other questions about it. All right. So we'll move to our action items. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the tentative 2023 tax levy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Avia, I'm sorry. Ms. Steckity?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay bills received in November 2023 for the 2024 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Steckity?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Right, motion passes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve calendar E for the 2024, 2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Nope.
Oops, sorry. Yes.
I definitely thought you were saying no for him.
I cracked up the wrong name here, there you go. Throw his vote in there.
No. We'll move to the superintendent's report.
So tomorrow officially is School Board Appreciation Day, and we NCUSD 201 have much to appreciate. Thank you to our school board, on behalf of our administrative team, and I believe I speak for our staff and certainly our community. The community's done a great job of electing a school board that is truly student-centered and works in the best interest of the community, shows incredible leadership and tremendous, uh, time commitment. And so, uh, we're very fortunate to have the school board we have in our district. We truly are, and I think that's widely recognized. So thank you to all of you as members. Uh, there is a short video presentation tomorrow that we're.
Tomorrow, yes, it'll be sent out tomorrow.
That will, uh, pre, that was been, uh, created by the district to show appreciation to our board for all you do. It's a small token, but.
I know, what did they get?
Oh, God.
Did you say, okay. The pictures? What videos did you send?
Didn't do anything.
I dressed it appropriately.
It's a very appropriate. Um, Shannon's going to help me with this. The Holidays Festival, there's a sign-up for December 2nd, for those who are interested in being in the parade. How will they know that, board members?
Um, you received it in an update, and I emailed it to you. And then, we, once we have the final times of lineup and everything from the village, I'll send them out.
It's fine.
And admin and staff have been invited as well.
That's my present.
Admin, staff, and families.
Families, yeah.
Yes, if I could, there's two other items and then I can proceed. This is just, uh, on Monday, the 20th, that's next Monday, we have a public relations, uh, committee meeting scheduled. We're also having a strategic planning meeting coupled with that that will, uh, also address dual language. We need some input from the board. This is a rough draft of some of the ideas we have for, uh, strengthening the dual-language program. There will be a meeting that we will hold for our dual-language teachers and our parents in the coming month, but we need some time to strategize and discuss. So, the meeting on Monday is open to the public. It's primarily a time to do PR work and discuss that as a committee, and also to take a look at this draft proposal. And then there will be a subsequent meeting with the families of, uh, dual-language students and our staff to have further discussion.
And I just, as a part of that, I just want to make clear that, um, those meetings are not like this one, where this is one-sided, um, in those committee meetings. Questions, thoughts, concerns, ideas are all, um, in the mix. So, um, it's not as, uh.
Discussion happens during these meetings.
Discussion and work happens, it's not the stringent kind of one-sided thing.
As Joel said, he said it really succinctly, this is a meeting that takes place in public, where committee meetings are public meetings. Yes.
Please, please, please.
Come and join us.
So that's 6:00 on November 20th. The last thing I'll say is the, the effort that the, our entire staff, admin and, uh, teachers and the teaching assistants are putting in has been incredible. Especially the work that the teachers are doing to strengthen our curriculum and instruction and through the professional learning community concepts. They are just so diligent and so serious about it and making tremendous improvements in our curriculum. Uh, it's just really impressive, and I'm, need to express that. We've really challenged them and created a sense of urgency, and they have responded with a tremendous, uh, work ethic. Uh, not that they haven't always worked hard, but they've even put more of a focus on improving our curriculum and the way we look at student performance information, and it's been incredibly impressive. That's pre-K through 12.
Like, I like these, they're measurable, the SMART goals.
I really like that.
For the dual?
Yes.
Yes. And they're not in stone, but that's as, I think it, yeah, but, yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Derek?
All right, four reports.
Am I going to go as I always do?
Yes.
Um, all right, what have I been involved in?
Illinois reads?
I will, it's on there. Unless you want to.
Oh, you don't want to.
Okay. Um, first off, uh, fall sports awards were last week. Thanks to all the, um, athletes, the coaches, the parents, everyone involved, it was a great night. It had a great season, everybody worked so hard. On that note, congrats to, winter season has started, so girls' basketball at the high school has started tonight. Um, that's at the high school level. Junior high level, girls' basketball team made it to the playoffs and finished their season this past Monday. Uh, good luck to all the kids trying out for the Spring Musical at the junior high, and then the competition cheer squad, and all the fun things there. And then Illinois reads, um, please go ahead and look at our website, we have a flyer out, you'll see me posting things online all the time. Um, we are hosting an event in February with, uh, the IRC. And it is going to bring together Illinois authors to come meet and talk to anyone. Uh, anyone is going to be invited to this event. It was a big event back in 2015 with its initial kickoff, and we're kicking it off again here in Westmont again. If you know of any sponsors or would like to sponsor, please reach out to Amy. Um, Amy Quattrone over at the junior high. Otherwise, we do have QR codes on those flyers available on the website.
We'll need lots of volunteers.
And then we'll need lots of volunteers, and yes, your junior high student can guess SSLC hours for helping volunteer. So, yeah, that's all the excitement we've got going on, as of right now.
You know, I just want to mention, uh, December 2nd, Band Boosters, the craft show at the high school. Um, it's important, it's, it's a good show, so come on out.
Hope them get to Disney, to help them get to Disney.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
Uh, many of my, my things are kind of listed in, in our, um, future meetings and events, so.
All right.
We'll go to that. Um, um, just FYI, um, the finance committee meeting, um, previously scheduled for tomorrow, November 15th, is canceled. Um, and the next finance committee meeting, what is it, with facilities also?
Yeah.
Uh, will be December 4th at South School, 3:30?
Yep.
3:30, so. Um, the Holiday Shop at Miller, um, always exciting, kids love it. Uh, November 17th at 5:00 PM and November 18th at 9:00 AM. Um, as mentioned before, a PR committee meeting and strategic plan with a focus on dual langu, language is next Monday, November 20th at 6:00 PM at South School. Um, everyone should enjoy the Thanksgiving break, November 22nd to November 24th. Happy Turkey Day. Uh, the Westmont High School Band Craft Show, December 2nd, starting at 9:00 AM. Um, get there quick, parking spaces go fast, that's at the high school.
I do.
And pick up mini-gifts. Um, elementary school PTO meeting, December 5th, 7:00 PM at Manny. Westmont High, sorry, Westmont Junior High School Combined Choral and Band Concert, December 6th, 7:00 PM, Westmont High School. Uh, the next SIP day with early dismissal is December 6th. Westmont High School Fine Arts Exhibit and Concert is December 13th, 6:30 PM at Westmont High School. Uh, Manny, Manny Winter Band and Chords Concert is December 14th at 6:00 PM. And then our next CUSD 201 board meeting, December 19th at 6:00 PM, Westmont Village Hall. Um, and something else that wasn't on, I think it will, what's that, Westmont Next Top Sentinel? I think they did have that, did it go?
Oh, the Top Sentinel was last week, yeah. You missed it.
Um, I think that it, well, looked like a, a good crowd was there. Um, we don't have to return a closed, so I always wait for an objection. Someone's like, no, no, they really want to go back. Never get that. Um, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn on November 14th, 2023, regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.